We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Colpak, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Do I, uh, excuse me. The North Dakota Job Service staff will visit the main library on October 17th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. to provide job-seeking assistance, veteran services, information on training programs, resume-building assistance, limited unemployment insurance assistance, and migrant and seasonal farmworkers services. Teens are invited to register to make their own spooky terrariums on the October 19th at the main library as well. Kids of all ages are invited to recognize mean reptiles, the not-so-creepy callers, at the main library at 10:00 a.m. October 28th, featuring live, cold-blooded creatures of all kinds, brought to the library by members of the NDSU Hepatology Club. Herpatology Club, I'm sorry. Other, the National Academy of Construction selected the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Area Flood Risk Management Project as a recipient of its recognition of Special Achievement Award, which highlights creativity, innovation, vision, and accomplishments of practitioners in engineering, design, and construction industries. The award was presented to the members of the Division Authority in the Corps at a ceremony last weekend in Boston. On September 29th, 12 new firefighters graduated from the Joint Training Academy, six from the Fargo Fire Department and six from the West Fargo Fire Department. These recruits completed a 15-week program to help develop skills to serve Fargo and West Fargo communities. In this video, you will hear from the Fargo recruits on why they chose a career in firefighting and see some of the intense training as it did throughout the academy. Our comms team made this a little longer because we have some time to make up before we get to 5:15, and that will help us get there. Plus, it's a good story, right? It's a nice video.
The exciting thing for me is, as we're doing this, is our eighth time doing this together. Our two communities are committed to this process. And we see this as a great opportunity for you guys to start a career together because we're neighbors, and we're going to do nothing but work more closely together.
We're very unique in that we do this joint academy, and we're the only ones in the state that are doing something like this. But really, it's the model moving forward for what we're looking at in consolidated operations between two cities, and how we keep helping each other as we grow and help with our shortcomings. This is only something that's building us further and further into the future.
Well, I'm originally from Memphis, Tennessee, so I moved up here in 2018, brought my kids in my life, and we love the city. We love the family aspect of Fargo, and so we stayed here, and I want to make Fargo a better place.
I played college football, so that team aspect is something I've been craving ever since I graduated college. Then when I saw that the fire department was hiring, I just thought, why not? Captain Worlinger said, I mean, this is the ultimate team sport, because you're relying on the person next to you for everything, really.
I was born here, so I, I like Fargo. I want to give back to the community. So this is my way of finding a job, finding a career that's stable and knowing what it stands for.
Something that draws me to fire is the, the team aspect of it, and of course, helping your community. That's something that I've kind of been doing all these years. I love being physically active. It's something I'd always wanted to do, but I hadn't seen a lot of women in the field. You know, growing up in small towns, it's very male-dominated. So when I saw, you know, more and more women in our community getting involved, and my kids are getting older, I decided it was a good time to jump in and give it a shot.
Well, I mean, I do like the Fargo area, and I was in the area at the time. And the fact that Fargo kind of has their own in-house training really helped because, just, just because I don't have any experience firefighting prior to this, so.
Well, I've always wanted to help people. I like the team aspect of the job, hanging out with like people who have the same goals as you. And I wanted a career firefighter job. They, more opportunity to grow.
My dad and a couple uncles and some cousins were on a volunteer fire department back home. So growing up, I was always around that, and I was kind of an adrenaline junkie, so I wanted to do something exciting.
I've never wanted a job where I sat down and was bored all day. I wanted to be a firefighter because it's different every day. You meet new people every day. You have different situations, different challenges, and I knew that I would never get bored.
Firefighting has always just been a dream of mine since a kid, and so my dad was a volunteer firefighter. I did volunteer firefighting before this, and really just noticed I enjoyed that more than my day-to-day job. And so when the opportunity came up, I took a jump and said, let's, let's give this a try.
Well, I always wanted to help people. I wanted to be a part of a team that was almost more of a family opposed to just going to work and leaving at the end of the day. I just wanted to be a part, something bigger than myself.
The big thing about choosing Fargo for me was I grew up in the area, and I always felt like it was good to stay close to home and serve the community that I grew up around, and how fast Fargo's growing and the members of the department are huge for me. I mean, everybody likes to train. Everybody likes to teach the younger generation coming up.
A lot of my family members are actually firefighters. It's kind of a long-running thing in my family. For a while, I actually wanted to be a nurse, but school wasn't for me. I like work with my hands. I like hard work. So I figured, why not try out to be a firefighter, see what it was about? Then I got hired as paid-on-call for West Fargo, and loved it so much, I decided to try and get full-time.
Fire Academy, 16 weeks. We started out doing our EMT certification. So a lot of training there, a lot of good hands-on medical skills. And then we got into fire, so we had kind of different focuses throughout the week. A lot of hands-on, a lot of skill work, a lot of book work, just getting good reps in with our teams, working with each other, pulling hose, flowing water, lots of ladder work, just about any, anything you could think of.
Yeah, I feel like learning all the different tools, how to operate different tools, equipment. I mean, I didn't have any prior experience with the fire service before this, so yeah, it's been a lot of new information. The EMT section was a lot of new information for me as well. But yeah, I feel like that's been the most difficult part, but the most rewarding because I've learned, the most I've learned, I mean, for sure, in my life probably these past few weeks, so.
It's great. I love being able to take all of that book knowledge and prove to myself that I can do everything that the book says that I'm, should be able to do. To be able to get the background and the book knowledge and, and what they tell you you're able to do, and then to be able to have a captain there, have a senior firefighter show you exactly what you're doing and put it to work. It really just proves that, like, everything goes hand-in-hand, and you can do what, what the book is telling you you can do.
I guess the bookwork. I would say, yeah, a lot of bookwork. It's kind of like going back to school again. A lot of stuff to study, a lot of things to memorize. I've always preferred like the hands-on stuff, so, so that comes a little easier, I think, to me. It just kind of, I think, clicks a little easier once you go and actually do it.
Learning the stages is, is eye-opening. Before the academy, I didn't know about the flow paths or the flashover. Learning all this is completely new, but actually going in and see it and working with it, it, it all comes together. The more you're in the academy, the more you're learning, the more, the more you're asking questions with other classmates of yours. It's, it comes together at the end.
The new strategies that are out there for firefighting has really, it's been very interesting to me to learn. I love problem-solving, and it really seems to be just a problem-solving that you have to do. So does it need more oxygen? Does it need water? Where the fire is going to go, how it's going to go? That's always been something I'm, I should say, something that I'm picking up and learning. Definitely don't, not expert at it, but something that is cool to see how, you know, just opening a window and then applying water in a specific spot can take a big fire go away real quick.
I guess it all comes down to like fundamentals. You have to learn how to do the little things before you can do the big things. You can't just go running into a fire and putting it out. You've got to learn how to deploy the hose, you know, work with your team. You just can't go running in.
You read the book, and you're not always quite sure how to do everything. So many people that you can ask questions. You can ask them how they would do this or that, and you just get a wide perspective, different ways you can do stuff.
I think it's great to start building that relationship in the academy, and so, like, we worked out with the Fargo PD recruits a few times. It's good to see they're, they're starting off just like we're starting off. I'm sure we'll see them on the streets once we get out there. Even Sanford Amulets, we had one day just to go over there and learn how to take the stretcher out, learn how to use the stair chair, learn how to use their tools, because they have different tools than we do. You kind of learn how everybody does everything and how to work together proficiently.
Been fun being able to understand that more, and I mean, we get told this almost every day that like if somebody doesn't know who to call or what to do, they're going to call the fire department. And I think that's really cool because for us, it's problem-solving, and it's being able to work and use ideas off of each other. And all of that together has been fun because, I mean, you're kind of shooting ideas out there to see if it works, and sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
I think for being part of the joint academy, it was one of those things where we figured out real quick to embrace the suck of it all, to like, hey, you're not going to know everything. You're not going to be the strongest at everything. You're going to figure out who you are as, what you need to improve on, and what you are able to help your classmates be better at, and what they can do to be, make you a better firefighter as well. And then by the end of this, there's going to be a lot more that we need to learn, but we have a good understanding where we can be competent firefighters.
I think what I'm looking to gain out of current firefighting is making a change. Hopefully being able to affect somebody's life in a positive impact or help them on their worst day. I like to help people around me. Brings me a lot of joy to be able to see people at the end of the day, like, just know we're there for them.
So is the department to fall, or are you going to get some more firefighters?
Academy started today.
How many more, Chief? Five?
Five.
Whoa. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 1 through 39?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. So beyond the public hearing, there's item 44. Susan Thompson, can you come up, please? The receive and file general fund budget actual through September 30th, 2023, and 2023 year-end projections. Susan Thompson to explain.
Hello. There are two pages for you. The first one, it's actually page 78 in your agenda. That is the budget to actually, year-to-date through September. Now, we have the budget, the actual, and then the variance. I've also included some comments on the bottom. As you can see, revenues are down about $2 million. Expenses are also down, but $2.8 million. So year-to-date, revenues exceed expenditures by about $1 million. I listed some examples, a couple things. We have state aid. The original payment was lower based on some new funding mechanisms, but they're also sending a one-time payment that we're expecting to get before year-end, and that's nearly $2 million. Special assessment CIP revenue is higher than budget. They're just very busy with citywide projects. Interest is higher, and then there's some salary savings built into the expenditures. Any questions on that?
Any questions by the commission?
The second page is year-end projection, as was requested. We'll be doing this on a quarterly basis. So we carried the year-to-date from the prior page as the first column, and then we have our fourth-quarter estimates. As we mentioned earlier on some of our meetings this summer, in order to accomplish this in a meaningful way, we really needed to have a lot of conversations with the department heads, what were their expectations and plans. So Jordan Corneliuson and I met with all of them. We got, had some really good dialogue. We'll be making some budget adjustments that relate to some of these offages, and you'll be seeing that come forward on one of the November meetings. But the estimates reflect those adjustments, some of them that might be notable. We've increased the franchise fees to start being recognized on November and December. That state aid payment that I mentioned is also listed here. And then we adjusted for trending. As I'd mentioned in a previous meeting, the budget included an asset sale, which we know isn't going to happen at this point, so we removed that. Did a little house cleaning, and so what this shows is that at the end of the year, we'll be slightly over revenues versus expenditures. And then I have to put some disclaimers, wild cards at the bottom, just as a placeholder. So assumes it's a normal winter. We received those payments that we mentioned from the Highway Fund, and then no kind of unusual year-end adjustments. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Preston?
So it looks like the revenue and the expense side was adjusted down by $2 billion. On the expense side, then, what you're saying is that's coming, that savings is coming from vacant positions. Is that?
That's correct. Yes.
By the way, thank you so much for doing this. I think this is a real big step forward in understanding what we're looking forward towards, so thank you.
Thank you. If you have any other comments on presentation, let me know.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. This is just from my information. Does the increase in franchise fees begin earlier than the beginning of the calendar year?
It was put, the request was put through to start as soon as they could get it through, and it started. We've been told that they can start in November.
So that will have a positive impact on the current budget?
Correct. Yes.
John, we want to thank Brenda Daring for following up on that and worked closely with the PSA, or PCS committee to get that Public Service Commission, PSC, yes, okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Just one more question. So, let's see, it's October. The next time we'll see this will be the end of the year, I'm assuming, going into the following year.
Yes, and it won't be final-final because we carry that over several months to get all of our audit adjustments, but it will be an estimate.
Okay.
Very good. Now we go to public hearings. Donald Kress, I hope you're ready. Item 41, Southwest Fargo Mission 2nd Edition, approved recommended by Planning Commission on 5/2/23, continued to 7/10, 7/24, and 8/21. Zoning changed from public institutional to public institutional general commercial with conditional overlay. First reading of the zoning ordinance and a plat of the Southwest Fargo Mission 2nd Edition. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. This item includes an ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor stated, item 41 is the Southwest Fargo Mission 2nd Edition. Here we're on 45th Street and 40th Avenue South. There is a large church there, Living Waters Lutheran Church, and a large area around there, and there's a close-up of that location. There are actually two lots here, one very large one and one very small one. And that's going to get replatted into two lots. Here are some photos that show the site. Here we're looking north from 40th Avenue. This yellow line here is about the width of the new lot that's going to be on here. This is looking for the other direction. This lot is going to be, as we'll see in a moment, zoned general commercial and developed with a mixed-use project. This project includes a setback for the protection of Drain 27. This is looking east from 45th Street. That's about where that easement would be. It's an imaginary line, of course. And then this is just looking east along the 40th Street frontage. You see the church and the large parking lot there. The current zoning is PI, public institutional. The proposed zoning will be PI on the one lot that is the church, and general commercial, GC, on the new lot that will be, again, for the mixed-use development. And there is also a conditional overlay on that general commercial lot. Your commissioners, you are familiar with these conditional overlays. We apply them to properties that develop along our arterials, especially on the corner of two arterials. This is just a summary of the items that are included in that. The full arterial, or the full conditional overlay is included in your packet and in the ordinance. Again, the plat here will create two lots. Lot 2 will be the church. Lot 1 will be the, the mixed-use building. And it's also mentioned in your staff report that there is a setback for the, for County Drain 27. We have an ordinance that requires us to have an area for drain protection. You received a laydown item tonight that was just some additional findings for what we call a subdivision waiver for drain setback. Often we have, for greenfield development, we have a lot that is dedicated to Southeast Cass Water Resources District, who owns all the drains. In, in cases like this, where we're working within already-developed lots, we just ask the developer to provide an easement, and that is reviewed by our city engineer as well as Southeast Cass Water Resources District. So there's, there's 115 feet here that's already on the drains board's property, so the applicant provides an easement of 60 feet here, which satisfies that requirement. And that's what that laydown item was for you. Here's just an approximation of how the mixed-use building will fit on the lot once it's done. Staff received one public comment email, which is included in your packet. If your commission wishes to approve it, please use the motion on the screen there. It just adds one item to include the findings that you got in your laydown item. The applicant, Chris Mack of Christiansen Companies, is with us tonight, and they wish to address the commission. Staff appreciates the cooperation of the Southeast Cass Water Resources District on this project. They did a lot with us on this. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning? Anyone present wishing to speak? Who calls the public hearing? Do I have a motion?
Move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Public hearing, special assessment list of a new bridge, underground utilities, paving, shared-use path and structure, incidental improvement of District B and 21A, continued from our 10/23 meeting. Who is going to speak to this, please?
I apologize for not being up here sooner.
Okay.
Really, to speak to it, you know, the biggest thing, I think, is the memo that City Attorney Nancy Morris was able to supply. We did have discussions.
Tom, just, just, could you remind the public what you're speaking to?
Absolutely. So this relates to the 64th Avenue Overpass Project. There was a concern at the last meeting about, so century code dictates how special assessments are to be performed. And part of the issue here is that the bridge spans over interstate right-of-way, and that interstate right-of-way is not currently, excuse me, within our municipal limits. And so all of our, our benefit of special assessments need to be within our municipal limits for us to assess it today. So there's a lot of conversation about that, and I'll have Nancy chime in here at some point, too. But, but really, I think what resulted in our conversation is that, you know, the bridge structure is connecting City of Fargo roadways from City of Fargo limits to City of Fargo limits. So that's certainly part of it. Another part of it is only a portion of the bridge structure was special assessed. I believe it's about 1/3 special assessed, 1/3 state-funded, 1/3 city-funded. So I think you could easily make the argument that the portion that's being special assessed is the abutments and the embankment and the wick drains and all those things that are in City of Fargo limits. And so, excuse me. So again, through our conversations, we're quite confident that, that we are following state statute, and we can move forward with the certification of the project.
Did you also, on the specials, via special's policy, cap the amount that is assessed to the homeowner?
Correct. Yep. So I, I did, we did reference that briefly last week, or last time, and I, I couldn't recall, but it is capped. The cap for a structure is just over 1.5 cents per square foot. We actually did not meet that cap for this project, so, so we are less than the cap for the structure as well.
Dan, you have something to add?
No, I, I'll just add that the Special Assessment Commission did drive this project also, and with their approval for the benefit spread, and then we applied the actual dollars and cents to that after the fact.
And Nancy, do you want to add anything more?
No, I did provide the memo to you, and Tom summarized our conversations regarding the assessment application of the law. Thank you.
Just for the public, could you plan, tell us what we said in your memo?
Sure. Well, it is included in the packet, but it is also, it is my legal conclusion that it is a proper assessment of the property that is located within the City of Fargo.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wished to speak to this assessment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Tim Nation. I'm the one who originally brought up this issue. And I think that's a great explanation. It looks like they did a good job. One thing that I think of now is if they did divide the funds, I would, I would like to see that. I would like to see that divided out, see who got what and, and where the money went, if that actually happened. So I, I hope all of you read the law pertaining to these special assessments, and I, I hope you understand that there are no provisions in the law pertaining to projects outside the municipality. There is nothing that says connecting the municipality. The law says within the municipality very specifically. I know the city attorney formed an opinion on this, and I hope that you keep in mind that the City of Fargo is a city attorney's client, and that opinion is going to represent that attorney-client relationship, no different than if I were to hire an attorney. That opinion would look much different as well. So all I can do at this point is ask that you use your best judgment and following the law, and it's three words, within the municipality, and thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this question? I'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion? And either one of you, Tom or Dan, could you tell us suggested motion?
To certify the project as it stands today, or as it was requested and approved by the Special Assessment Commission.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Remind me, we, do we have three members on our Special Assessment Commission?
Correct.
And do they all attend?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Colpak?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciated the memo, and I would just encourage citizens. I thought it was a very strong argument, and the third to the last graph in that, in that memo lays it out, I think, very strongly. So thank you for that work.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to.
Mr. Strand?
I would like to thank Mr. Nation for, for pushing us further to learn more. It's terrific to hear from citizens and to have opportunities to step up our knowledge, you know, and I, I don't know very many out there that are into special assessments, but you're, you're now one of them, and, and thank you for your citizen engagement. It's important to have people helping guide us.
And you're welcome to come by the office. They can show you where the money's spent now that we assigned special assessment, who put what and where. We should be able to do that. I think, Tim, you also had a thing about timing of when we notified you of this, and I think we will work on that as well, so thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 43, hearing on a dangerous building located at 924 7th Street North. Sean Radnick to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is about a building at 924 7th Avenue North, 7th Street North, I apologize. It's a 1,431-square-foot building consisting of a story-and-a-half wood-frame structure being used as a threeplex. The owner is FM Property Pros II. The structure was built in 1908, and all taxes are current and paid. The damage to the structure, it has multiple windows and doors that are boarded up and broken out, broken windows all over. North entry door had been kicked in, large amounts of overgrowth around the building. Citizen complains that there was squatter activity, and one of my inspectors said that this is the most needles they've seen on a property currently, and it appears to meet seven of the 10 dangerous building criteria. Here's a timeline of events. We were alerted of a possible, of the possibility of a dangerous structure at 5:30, 23.
We were alerted of a possible, of the possibility of a dangerous structure on 5/30/23. The notice was sent to the owner and to the bank when we found the mortgage holder. We also posted the notice of dangerous building on 6/2. The interior inspection was done of the structure on 6/7, and the structure was secured by the city on 6/8. There is some time there, about three months, where we were trying to work with the owners and the bank, trying to get them to keep the structure secure, mow the lawn, cut the trees, things like that, and make it at least look better, so that we wouldn't have to proceed forward. On 9/14, we had to secure the structure for a second time due to squatter activity. On 10/2, we had the request for the dangerous building hearing here at commission. In 10/3, we mailed the notice to show, order to show cause to the owner, and we're here tonight for the dangerous building hearing. This is the way the structure stands, and these are the things that the inspectors are seeing. You can see there's lots of overgrowth, there's lots of boarding up and trash in the yard all over the place. This is the interior, this is garage portion, I do believe, where there was just things stacked everywhere. You can see that there's water damage, as well as other damage all over the property. It's very difficult to get around in the property due to some of the garbage and debris. It was just an unsanitary project. With the additional information, there was a lot of squatter activity observed throughout the process. The structure is part of a larger project that was considered at the Planning Commission on October 3rd. I do believe FM Properties is going to be removing this structure and another structure, and then constructing townhomes, but we only came to that conclusion after that, the Planning Commission meeting, because nobody had given us information otherwise. The owners were not really sharing much information with us. And the reason for the extended timeline is we were trying to work with the bank and the mortgage, and the owners to get the property cleaned up. We did have an inspector speak to a contractor, because FM Properties did have another project right across the street from this one, and we asked them if there's any way that they could use that contractor to remove the dangerous building, and I understand he gave them a bid, but they never acted on that bid. And the recommended motion is up on your screen. I'll stand for questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this building? Anybody wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, and then I can make a comment.
Commissioner Preston?
I just said this to Sean a few weeks ago, too. I'm just so glad to see these are coming through as quickly as they are. The timing is so much more, I think, improved. Your staff obviously has been really busy, so it's good to see.
Well, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You have my recommendations for appointments to the Economic Development Incentives Committee and the Fargo Youth Initiative. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's fun to see people growing up and now joining some of these commissions and coming forth, so I'm sure the youth commission, as well as Eric Barnard, met him as a child, so it's fun to see them coming forth and serving on our committees. Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Ladies and commissioner assignments, I'll start with Pepcorn, because she's usually the shortest.
I am the shortest today, too. No update, Mr. Chair.
Arlette?
Nothing at this point.
I just, I came back from the trip to Boston, and I just want to say it was really fun to see the FM diversion picked as the project in the country, and LaGuardia Airport was the winner last year, and if anybody's been in LaGuardia as they did their reconstruction, that was a big mess, and it really is beautiful now. But what they really liked about our project is cooperative effort by all the communities within their area, and the fact that federal, state, and local funding is what solved that problem. So it's fun to see that, and then when the Boston Transportation Director stood up and said, "And we're going to try to figure out how to do a seawall across the Port of Boston," I felt like we had a much smaller project than that, but it's amazing what's going on out there. Mr. Colpak?
I have two slides, and both I've touched on already tonight, so the first is an update on Fargo Fire Station Number 8, along 64th Avenue South and 33rd Street, and some exciting pictures there to see the progress. The external walls and roof are expected to be set in place starting this week. In all, underground plumbing and electrical wiring is installed, as well as masonry wall and structural steel. And contractors anticipate the building will be weather tight by the end of November, and as I've mentioned earlier, additionally, five firefighter recruits started at a new 16-week academy today. And then we just talked about this one, the Fargo Youth Initiative. There's a picture of the new members. It's excited to welcome seven new members and five returning members. The Youth Initiative plans to hold their Fall Kickoff Meeting on Sunday, October 29th, and some of their priorities, updating Fargo Youth Needs Assessment, coordinating a Springtime Impact Fargo event, which I'm really excited to learn more about, and working on other projects related to mental health, racial equity, and career exploration. And just a reminder, applications from Fargo High School students are accepted all year round, and it's just great to see this kind of energy and commitment, so those are my updates.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, mayor. Senator Hoven came to town last week and met with many people. They were talking water and following up on the Laskowitz building takedown, but my role, my connection was when he was at the Airport Authority and meeting with Airport Authority Board members in the community, and roughly speaking, $150 million project, about half of it, $75 to $80 million will be federal money. I'll say this, Senator Hoven really delivers for Fargo and for North Dakota, and he's really on his game, and, you know, and it's something to have a US senator that connected to us like he is, and I think we have them on fast dial, quick dial, you know, on our phones, but just the airport project, they're having increasing costs like everybody else, they're having to pull their belts in, they're still hoping to make the parking ramp project aspect of it work, but, boy, that's just going to be transformative to the community to have that airport double in size, to have a parking ramp, to have just that huge. In the next few years, we're going to really see some remarkable change, and we need to thank Senator Hoven.
Very good. Motion adjourned?
So moved.